Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, last meeting of the year of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. All of our council members are present this evening as well. For the record, I want to note that we met earlier this evening for a closed session to discuss labor negotiations, followed by an executive session to discuss a real estate matter, followed by a welcoming or a short reception to recognize outgoing council member, Mathaniel Jones. So far, a busy evening already so far. I, at this point, would like to invite Ron Jones, who is our senior planner in Waste Resources, to come to the podium to talk about very, very important solid waste, or not solid waste, a recycling update. I gotta keep those separate.
I can't come without prompts. So, I'll try to get the brand names here.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Selby, members of council. I'm here to provide a status update on the upcoming changes to the city's recycling program, which will become effective January 1, 2020. So, as you may recall, on September 17th, 2019, staff briefed city council on the status of the current recycling markets, the city's response to date, and recommended the removal of glass bottles and jars and polycoated paper cartons. Polycoated paper cartons being things like the milk cartons, drink boxes, and frozen food boxes, so they're plastic coated. It's a program change that's largely driven by the impacts of the global recycling market after China banned recycle imports in 2018, and then other countries placed significant import restrictions, really pulling right on those heels. And it's caused a large oversupply of materials, and thereby resulting in a need to focus really on the high-quality recyclables, and not so much on the quantity, but really focusing on the quality. So, council supported the decision, including working with the city's utility advisory committee regarding staff's implementation and outreach plan. And subsequently, staff did meet with our UAC in October. We shared with them our plan. We received their input, and then we met with them again just recently in early December to give a status update of where we're at. And so, staff is now in the process of implementing our outreach plan for this change. It'll become, again, effective January 1. And what that will mean is, for glass bottles and jars, the city will be asking residents to do one of two things: either take them to one of four drop-off locations, or put them in the garbage. For the polycoated cartons, we're going to be asking for those to go directly into the garbage. There really, there is no other market for them. For the glass, we've secured three additional drop-off sites to the Thurston County Transfer Station, so those will be available. And they're really going to be more convenient for the folks on the west side, downtown, and kind of this, kind of east side that's near downtown. So, then, as you're farther out, you'll have kind of a couple of options: either downtown or going out to the transfer station. And again, that's for the glass. So, those glass drop-off locations, and I want to be specific, we're, we're on a somewhat fast timeline, so these, they will be ready January 1. They'll really be ready the last couple of days of December, so I want to make it clear that they won't be ready tomorrow or the next day. We've got special containers on order that are going to be arriving right, right up to the deadline, so, but we will be ready, and we've prepped all the sites. And so, any kind of special striping, that's already done. And so, I just wanted to go through those four sites with you. So, we're going to have a glass drop-off at the City of Olympia Saturday drop-off site, but that will be available 24/7, so the, the glass containers will sit outside. And that's at 1010th Avenue Southeast, just off of East Side Street. We've secured a location at Yager Park on the west side, 503 Alta Street, and that'll be available dawn-to-dusk daily for residents. And then, the glass that we collect will be going to Concrete Recyclers to be crushed up and used as an aggregate material for construction and road base. And so, the, the other site that's available on the west side is Concrete Recyclers themselves, 2935 Black Lake Boulevard in Tumwater, and they'll be open Monday to Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for glass drop-off. So, and then, of course, the Thurston County Transfer Station, all the recyclables can go out there, 2420 Hogan Bay Road. And that's, again, daily, 8:00 a.m. to 4:45 p.m. So, understanding this is a big change, and again, on a somewhat accelerated timeline, that's largely because we normally send a collection calendar this time of year with the, the materials, and so it seemed natural to kind of fit this change in with communicating with our residents. So, instead of saying, "Here's a list in December," and then, and two months later, we change it, we just wanted to make that all one message. And we've worked closely with the city's Communication Services Team, Kelly Brasset and her team, and we've got a number of different tools, and I'll just share those with you, ways we're reaching out to residents. So, first, beginning this week, we'll be mailing an advanced notification letter, and that'll go out to all single-family households, all 15,000, and then also the 8500 multifamily households. So, that'll mail direct, and that'll let folks know kind of what's coming, what's, what the change is. And then, following closely behind that will be the collection calendar. So, that will include, then, the list of materials with pictures, and then it'll also include the addresses for the drop-off sites. We've also got a number of other tools that we're using, that some of them have been completed already, some are in the works. So, updating the website, we've already posted our frequently asked questions to a special page that is available through olympia-wa.gov/wastewise. So, that's already available, as well as a video explaining the change. And that was something that council had asked for, is to do a little video, so folks will be able to watch me, you know, put things in a bin. And then, updating the list of materials in the Recycle Coach app. So, that's the web app where folks can search for what they, what goes where, as well as that's available on a smartphone. So, you know, you can take it with you at all times. So, those changes will be available, or made, just before the end of the year, and then we'll also push out, this gives us the ability to push out notifications to about 3,000 subscribers about the change, and then continue to push those out as necessary. Again, we're working with the city's Communication Services Team to get the word out through social media. We've already contacted the Olympia Newspaper and Abby Spigman, and we should be seeing an article in tomorrow's newspaper about this change. And then, we'll have, working with Abby and trying to get one more article that will write at the end of this year, beginning in next year. And then, we'll push out through an e-newsletter to all subscribers. That also works as an additional news release or press release, and staff will be also working, trying to get some airtime on local radio stations. And then, the next Five Things Utility Billing Insert will go out January, February, and that will include a lot of information about this change in recycling, as well as that's going to mail directly. We're going to do a special mailing to the 8500 multifamily households, and then a follow-up postcard in March. And then, along with that, again, recognizing this is a big change, and it's going to take a little time for residents to adjust, our plan is really to provide the ongoing education throughout this next year and help residents recycle right. So, to that end, we'll be working with our collection staff to identify areas where maybe we have larger volumes of glass remating, say, once we get into the first quarter and second quarter of next year, and then we'll, they'll be able to tell us where to focus, and we can focus energy on those areas and those neighborhoods, maybe residents, and work with them directly. That will also be bringing back our college interns for the lid lift program, where we're inspecting for contamination. We'll include glass in that. And all of our materials are going to have a phone number and email for a way to contact staff, so we can get directly back to them and answer any questions. So, we're, we're ready for that. And with that, I'd just like to say thank you to the council, our UAC, and all the other staff, the other departments, the Communication Services Team, the city's legal department, utility billing staff, they've all been a big help. This has been a big team effort to get this launched and ready. So, again, our goal is to help residents do the right thing with their materials, and with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any questions? I'll start with Councilmember Partially.
And you may have said this, so I forgive me if I'm asking you to repeat something. Are you doing something for the businesses, the commercial entities that are doing recycling?
Yes, we are, and I apologize for leaving that part out. A staff member that works on the commercial waste side of things is working with, we have a small number of customers that do commercial recycling. Those are really affiliated with the downtown compactor, or shared compactor number two, where we have a recycling site. They've already been, staff has already reached out to them with a letter and direct notification. It's a small number, so it's been an easy ask. And actually, when we started recycling with them, one of the things that we started was no glass in that bin, so the only change there is with the polycoated materials. And then, we have a few other small, little commercials that were from a pilot a number of years ago, and so he's also working with them. So, yes, thank you.
Just had a quick comment and a question. Thank you very much for doing the additional outreach to the multifamily residents in our community. They don't get the, the utility billing, because a lot of times, they don't pay their own utility, so thanks for doing all that additional outreach. And the UAC means Utility Advisory Committee?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought I-
That's all right.
Yep.
Try to make sure we all take the acronyms out, extend them. And then, what are other jurisdictions doing, you know, with the, those that are serviced by LeMay? Is there consistency across the county on what's happening with glass?
It'll be much more consistent now. So, LeMay Waste Connections has had, when they went co-mingle, that I think, probably 2009, they went with curbside collected glass at that time, once a month. So, their glass is collected. Of course, it's also the drop-off location at Thurston County Transfer Station. That material also goes to Concrete Recyclers and is used in the same way. So, we have consistency there.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I had. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gilman.
So, Ron, I appreciate this, and we've, we've struggled with these changes over a period of time, but I just want to reiterate that the reduce and reuse parts of the equation are still very much in play. You know, as a, as a local community, we don't have a lot of opportunity for directly recycling these materials, and the markets and the expense to get products to the markets are making it so this recycling isn't, isn't really panning out to be particularly anything other than sorted garbage. So, I just wanted to underscore that we do have the reduce and reuse options still in front of us as ways we can reduce our impact and use less resources.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for noting that. Those are preferred, first positions to take is reduce. All right, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have an agenda, takes us right to public comment this evening. We have nine people signed up, so we should be able to get through, well, we will be able to get through everybody in the first half hour allotted. I have a countdown clock over my right shoulder. It's three minutes. You don't have to take all that time, but you can't cede it to another person, and we do ask that you speak to items that are, that can be on the agenda or any kind of city business, but that you not speak to items that we've held a public carrying on in the last 45 days or the next 45 days. So, with that, I will start with Heather Sbradlin, followed by Candy Mercer.
Good evening. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and after attending last week's meeting, on Wednesday, there was a fire at Plumb and Union, the exact area that I have been talking about my last two visits. I have some residents that would like to leave because of all of this chaos, but they can't afford to go anywhere else, so they feel like they're stuck. I did receive contact, though, from OPD regarding the fires and encampments, and look forward to working with them and the other agencies and the next steps moving forward. This is not just the railroad tracks, but my fellow speakers have been bringing those other areas to your attention and the attention that those areas need. Martin versus Boise, you can't criminalize homelessness, and I understand that, but you can criminalize criminals and their crimes: drug dealing, theft, being intoxicated in public, vandalism, dumping, trespassing, squatting, openly doing drugs, having active and open warrants for arrest, and those committing those crimes should face those appropriate punishments. Ricky's Law, which was effective April 1 of 2018, RCW 7105-360 and 7105-217. A small excerpt of the law: "Community members who are a danger to themselves or others, others' property, or gravely disabled due to drug or alcohol problems may be involuntarily detained to a secure withdrawal management and stabilization facility, also known as a secure detox. The state has until 2026 to fully implement this law, but why aren't we using this now? Mind you, this law was requested and fought for by someone who suffered with addiction and is a survivor of an attempted suicide because of his addictions. It took him two legislative sessions to get this bill to be accepted, and his name is Ricky Garcia. Where is the concern for public safety? Not just law-abiding and tax-paying citizens, but those taking advantage of the services to only further enable them with their addictions. There needs to be accountability. Where is the concern for the environmental impact that this is having? Fecal matter in the waters? This is disgusting. Poaching is despicable. The garbage and waste being dumped and left behind, falling down the hillsides, and the only things cleaning up this is the wildlife, and how good do you think that is for them? Our neighborhood smelt of sewage on Sunday and Monday, and likely from the railroad tracks and surrounding areas. I understand that there are some five-year plans and some that may take even longer to come to fruition, but what are we going to do about the here and now? What actions are being taken to save the city in this moment? When will laws start being enforced, not just by the police department, by other, by them and other agencies? We need to support them from our city officials and from our state. Like I said last week, my husband is active duty and just came back here to Olympia for the first time in over a year. He can't believe how bad it's gotten: all the garble, garbage, the people. He said it was just awful. He's been at a loss of words. He's actually pretty upset that I took him down Wheeler. I would love an opportunity to speak with any one of you at any time to work forward on this issue. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Candy Mercer, followed by Renee Dars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Candy Mercer, and I love Olympia enough to be here tonight. Tonight, I'm representing two crime victims, myself and a friend who could not make it down to tell her story. Last week, my friend's 10-year-old son was traumatized by a transient who approached him for money in a menacing fashion. This happened on an out-of-the-way cul-de-sac. This man had no reason to be there. The boy was alone. One reason his parents bought this location was they believed in free-range parenting. They wanted their son to be comfortable outside. Scared, the boy ran into his friend's house. Luckily, the door was unlocked. He hid behind the door. Demonstrating an astonishing level of boldness, the transient followed the boy into the house. He was chased off by another older child. The boy did the right thing. He is safe, but he has been harmed. That night, he slept in bed with his mom. His confidence has been shaken. He has lost his sense of safety in an area where he should be able to play without care. What happened to me is trivial in comparison, but still a violation that affected me and my family. I had three pieces of mail apparently stolen from a UPS mailbox, or USPS mailbox, in a well-lit, well-trafficked area. It was birthday cards for my mom and my daughter, and a present for her 21st birthday. None of the pieces arrived. This hurt me financially and emotionally. They stole my time, my energy, and the love I put into putting those gifts and cards together. At a recent council meeting, Councilmember Bateman scolded me for the crime of othering. I am guilty. I will other those who harm me and my community. I will not give moral exemption to criminals. I will other criminals. They don't care about me. They don't care about my friends or her son. It's abusive to expect me to care about them. When is this council going to have our backs? How much worse does it need to get? When are you going to care about our trauma, our losses? More importantly, when are you going to start protecting our families?
Thank you. Renee Dars, followed by Jerry Durker.
I can be a little emotional tonight, sorry. I wasn't going to come tonight, but I realized that this is the last meeting of the year. I want to say thank you for a job attempted to Councilwoman Jones that is leaving. I hate goodbyes, so I went online and I found an alternative to that, which is mind where you go, because we all know it's dangerous out there. Someone sitting up there on that bench has now twice said that homeless are only doing outside what we do inside. The inference that we should ignore the crime resulting from addiction just because housed people and state legislators are addicts are ridiculous. A housed and influential addict can also use poor judgment and violate others as well. Should we also excuse the housed addicts when they drive impaired and embezzled to feed their addictions? No, and neither should we excuse the property crimes and assaults happening among and from the homeless that are addicted and committing crimes. When property crime and assaults are allowed to proliferate and are excused, the ones who are hurt the most are the poor and working classes, not those that live on private roads, upper-class neighborhoods, and gated communities. It's people like me and like them. So, save your what-aboutism. It doesn't work anymore. We have a housing crisis, but that is no reason we have to excuse drug dealing, property crimes, and assaults enough. We expect our leaders to try and work on all these issues, not throw their hands in the air and tell the rest of us that we have to suck it up. You seem to be under, under the impression that we are making a moral judgment on addiction, and that is simply not the case. The addict themselves need to decide to stop, but it's the resulting crime and harm that we are making a moral judgment on. It is reasonable to do so. Is this the new norm? Are we expected to keep taking this? I will remind you one more time that the City of Olympia residents would much be obliged for free utilities for a year, for reasons that I have previously discussed. I'm going to leave you with this quote: "The forest was shrinking, but the trees kept voting for the Axe, for the Axe was clever and convinced the trees that his handle was wood, and he was one of them." West Asian fable.
Thank you. Jerry Durker, followed by Nicole Alexander.
Sorry there. Hi, my name's Jerry Durker. There's a couple of different things I want to talk about today. One, since there's a homelessness thing, I would like to let you know that apparently after Mr. West sued Mr. Inslee about, for, and actually put in a recall petition for him, even though Mr. West lost the case, Mr. Inslee has now decided to put homelessness as one of the two top issues that he's going to be working on in next year. So, sometimes, holding your feet to the fire actually helps. Second, I have to let you know that I have talked to the, the state auditor's office about a couple of things, including the, the shared legislative agenda partnership that you're doing again here, right now, which creates a problem and conflicts of interest for you, as well as, I've been telling you for quite a while now. So, those are serious problems that they're going to be looking into. And I've also asked them to look into the thing about giving tax exemptions to market-based homes and stuff like that. In fact, when I talked to the state legislature today, they couldn't find one, find a law that actually allowed the Olympia to do that, tax exemptions. They found one that the county could do things like that for certain places that were unincorporated areas, but they couldn't find one for you yet. They're still looking. And they're normally pretty good up there. They can find that stuff. Finally, I should note that, that you guys have been, that the planning department apparently has, still has private meetings with developers and stuff, and all at this time, they actually had the Chamber of Commerce there with them. And the, under the, the right of privacy and under RCW 9.73.030, the, and, under a United States Supreme Court decision, that you do not, in 2003, you do not have to even tell someone who's working for the government that you're recording their conversation with them, because there's, they have no expectation of privacy, and neither does anybody else when you're talking to a governmental agency. So, it would be, it would be a violation of that to have these kinds of things. And this is the state constitution, which I realize that, that a lot of people haven't read much of and stuff. I happen to do so, and this is my newest copy. And this says that the only reason that you can lend the, the city's credit or give away money is for support of the infirm or the poor, nothing else. You can't be doing it for this kind of thing.
Thank you.
It's unlawful. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Alexander, followed by Colleen Bradford.
Hi, I'm Nicole Alexander. I, um, I'm a, honestly, I'm, I'm a very committed and active leader here in, in the House's community. I, um, I'm, I'm the one that started the, the homeless camp under the Fourth Ave Bridge. And I'm here to, I'm here to tell you that I'm, I'm so sorry about, I'm so sorry how it, how it has turned out. And I also want to let you know that we are, we're taking, we're taking, we're taking steps into cleaning up the mess. And as hard as this is for me, I, I know that, I know that the time, the money, the energy being spent on the homeless crisis is extremely worrisome for everyone, you know? Doesn't seem to be getting anywhere, but I'm one of those people that, you know, I'm on your side with it. I fought really hard to keep my camp open down there for several reasons, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't in the best interest for the community, but I'm, I'm here to take ownership for, for my part. I started the homeless camp a year ago, and I fought to, I fought so hard to keep it. And now that I'm clean and sober, I am here, I'm here in a new light, and I'm trying to restore some faith in everyone here, that maybe we can all love Olympia together again, you know? Maybe someday I can, I can tell you my story of how I ended up there and why I fought so hard to stay, and, you know? But unfortunately, I don't think that there's enough time for that today. But another point that I wanted to make is that I know, I know that the homeless crisis has pretty much instilled too many negative emotions in everyone, hindering us from taking correct action. Everywhere you look, you know, there's, there's, I don't think there's anybody here that really knows what to do next. And the reality of it is, the accountability is not being held on the right people, and I'm here to tell you that myself. And I want to step up, and I want to get, I want to get your messages out there, because this, these, these stories, these stories need to be heard by them, too. More importantly, it's not going to get any better without, without them hearing and without them standing up for themselves and doing this with me. I can't, I can't do it alone. But I would like, I would like to hopefully restore your faith again, so we can all love Olympia again, together, and, and fix this crisis together, because that's what it's going to take: them, us, everybody. It's going to take everybody again.
Thank you. Colleen Bradford, followed by TJ Johnson.
My name's Colleen Bradford, and I live on 13th Avenue Southeast. I'm a homeowner of a really small home. Anyways, I just wanted to comment on, I know that the missing middle ordinance is going to be looked at again in accordance with the, the engross substitute house bill 1923, and I think there's still some considerations that people are worried about, you know, the general public or the homeowners, and it should be the renters, too. But I would like to, I would hope that, well, I think it's important to reach out and notify as large an audience as possible of what's going to be happening, what's happening, the, the negative as far, the positive as far as the negative about, you know, creating more housing to accommodate more people. The outreach on the last go-around with the missing middle ordinance didn't seem to be enough, because I found personally, as well as other people I know, that many, many people just weren't aware of it, and it's not because they hide from, you know, learning things about the community. It just wasn't enough. And this time, it would be really wonderful if the city could conduct a broader outreach, which can be accomplished through directly contacting homeowners and others through separate mailouts or you- separate mail-outs or utility bills. I'm not sure if you can do that, rather than just signature or, you know, information gathered at city council meetings or through neighborhood associations, which are great, but they may or not be really good at outreach to all the people in the community, the neighborhoods. A couple of outreach examples that I've seen is that in the Olympia Sunday paper, there was a story about the City of Lacey and the outreach that they had done to, I think it was homeowners, I think there was like 2,600 or something, and that they had mailed things directly to those folks. And then years ago, the city council, I received a letter as a homeowner, from the city council, they were looking at septic systems and hooking people up who had septic systems to the sewer, you know, system. And so as a homeowner, I got a letter from the city, and it told me exactly what was going on and asked me to respond if I'd be interested. Do I have a septic system, which I do, and would I be interested in hooking up the sewer, and that there's some things that could help us, you know, like there might, maybe a loan program could be put together, a low-interest loan program, and so on and so forth. So I just feel that this, even though it's an old issue, I know people have been arguing about it for, you know, a year and a half now, this issue affects too many people, homeowners and renters alike, to not adequately inform the public. Renters may not be aware, but current plans to attract developers through high tax breaks or through tax breaks will be passed on to them as well as homeowners. And if allowed to really participate and proper, and be properly informed and organized, the public can act as a valuable resource for an asset to the city council. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ Johnson, followed by CC Coats.
Good evening. On behalf of the Thurston Conservation District and the Community Farmland Trust, we're writing to express our concerns about future development of the recently acquired Zahn parcel off of Yelm Highway. As you know, the Zahn parcel has been used for food production for many generations, and nearly half of the 84-acre parcel is currently being leased back to Spooner Farms for continued berry production. Given the parcel's long history of agricultural use and the region's commitment to no net loss of farmland, we're interested in gauging with the city council parks department about ways of preserving agricultural uses on the property. If that is not possible, then we are committed to working with the city to ensure adequate mitigation for the loss of this valuable parurban farmland that we need to support a sustainable food system. Several years ago, the Thurston Regional Planning Council led a multi-year, multimillion-dollar process to develop the county's first sustainability plan. Both TCD and CFLT were involved in this process. The resulting Sustainable Thurston Plan identified goals and actions designed to put the region on a course to a more sustainable future, including the goal of no net loss of farmland. As supportive of a vibrant agricultural economy and a more sustainable local food system, we were very encouraged when the plan was adopted by TRPC and then formally endorsed in various ways by all the local jurisdictions, including this council. Unfortunately, since the adoption of the Sustainable Thurston Plan, the rate of farmland lost in Thurston County has actually accelerated. Between 2012 and 2017, 14,000 acres that had been farms were lost, a 19% reduction in just five years. We see the city's plan to develop the Zahn parcel as a further step in the wrong direction. We understand and appreciate the city's need to provide adequate parks and recreation opportunities for its citizens, but we also believe this goal must be balanced with other important community goals, including the preservation of farmland and a more sustainable local food system. It is our preference to find ways of achieving the former goal without jeopardizing the latter goals. The TCD Board of Supervisors and the Board of the Community Farmland Trust have directed us as chairs of our representative organizations to open a dialogue with the city council and staff on both the short-term issue of Zahn parcel development, as well as the longer-term strategy for incorporating the no net loss farmland goal into the city's comprehensive plans, policies, and codes. We would welcome the opportunity to sit down with the city council and staff to begin this dialogue, and we're requesting a meeting to begin this conversation before the city moves too far along with the Zahn planning process. Thank you for your community service, your attention to this issue. We look forward to reply, and this is signed by myself as chair of the Thurston Conservation District and Loretta Sepinen, Chair of the Community Farmland Trust. And I'll leave copies for you.
Thank you. CC Coats, followed by Sharon Koontz.
I brought a little present for Olympia City Council. This is for all of you, it's a copy of Everybody Poops. I want to present this copy of Everybody Poops to the Olympia City Council and staff, and hopefully you'll learn something from it.
Do you think you could reset the clock?
We have three minutes, and that's, you've started your presentation, so I think.
Okay. Hi, I'm CC Coats. I've been residents of this area for 29 years. I'm currently attempting to live on disability. $770 a month. I can't find a place to rent for $200 a month. This is my fourth year of living in my van. I've had to move and not stay downtown due to the number of assaults and attempted break-ins. And I want to point out that one of the issues that is a very serious health crisis is the lack of access to bathrooms. I continually hear about how you can't mitigate this human health crisis because of bad people. This is collective punishment. Why should I be punished for other people's actions? So if you lock your dog in your bedroom for a couple days and it goes to bathroom on the floor, whose fault is that? Is it the dog's? If you lock the bathrooms up for 18 hours a day and nature calls, whose fault is that? The city, the county, the state, and the federal government have a responsibility to make sure that our citizens have safe homes and that we don't have to wallow in our own You are negligent in your responsibilities to make sure that people have housing, because apparently it's far more important for a few greedy people to make money than it is to house the majority of the disabled people. $770 does not equate to rent in this current market, nor home ownership. 10, 20 years ago, it did. What are you doing wrong? Please think about this. If you don't want people pooping on the streets or urinating on the streets, make sure that people have access to bathrooms. It's going to be apparently a bit cheaper than a collar outbreak or building real homes, which is really the real solution here. Please be more supportive of your disabled and elders.
Sharon Koontz.
Good evening. Whoops. Hi, Sharon Koontz, representing Friends of Rocky Prairie. Some of you know about that issue from 11 years ago when we fought about it, trying to save that prairie, and others may be from signs around the neighborhood now and around town. Concerns include lots of things, impacts of a huge truck and train, proposed truck and train transfer, cargo transfer center out very close to Millersylvania State Park, right next to Fish and Wildlife Preserve, and in a rural area of this county. Concerns about 4,000 truck trips a day on our infrastructure, paving over 472 acres of prime habitat, which is also proposed, over a critical aquifer. So we've been going around and talking to various councils and various people and trying to get them to sign on to tell our commissioners not to rezone this area for industrial use. I'm going to quickly read you a sample resolution. This has been passed by a number of groups, and people have written letters. Tom Water City Council, for instance, wrote a letter rather than propose, rather than a resolution, but you're welcome to do either, but I hope you'll do something. Whereas the 745-acre Maytown site, also known as Rocky Prairie, owned by the Port of Tacoma, abuts a Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife Preserve with at least six endangered species, threatened and endangered. Whereas the surrounding rural area includes historic and popular Millersylvania State Park with its nearly 500,000 visitors a year, a 1,200-acre undeveloped tree farm and a wildlife preserve with hunting and hiking. And whereas the area in question is part of an extensive and valuable wildlife corridor providing needed connectivity for large animals. And whereas the Rocky Prairie Maytown site is ecologically fragile, has valuable rare habitat, several at-risk species, and is on a critical aquifer that is part of the Chahalas Basin and Black River watershed. And whereas multiple aspects of the North Point proposal go against both the letter and the spirit of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan, the Thurston County Code, and the Growth Management Act. And whereas the county staff determined in 2010, after careful study, that the site has so many critical areas on it that rural residents, one house per 20 acres, was the proper designation for the Maytown site, and industrial development there would not be appropriate. Therefore, be it resolved that, whomever, you could fill in the blank, that would be great, hereby respectfully request that Thurston County Commissioners not docket or consider an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to allow for a change to rural resource industrial zoning of the Maytown property. So that's it, and I'd like to present this to you. I've got a copy for each of you, along with a fact sheet that has a map of the area, so you know that there's undeveloped forest there that's alluded to in this, and then some of the facts that we've learned and garnered over researching this and talking to North Point. And that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cooper can take that from you. That concludes, those that had signed up to speak this evening during the public comment period, is there any comments from the dais or questions for staff? Going up and down, going up and down. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you for your comments tonight and for the participation and comments that we've had all across the year. For myself, I'm imagining that for these next two weeks, the darkest weeks of the year, that I'm walking through town, seeing it as kind of a living nativity scene night after night. And I know we're going to step right back into all these same conversations the first week of January, and I agree with Ms. Alexander that I hope we can get where we can all love Olympia again. So thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
I kind of feel the same thing. In just a few short days, we hit the longest, I guess, night of the year, shall we say, instead of the shortest day. It's a time for hibernation and self-reflection, so I wish all of you, whatever holiday it is, that you have the best. And I wouldn't mind at some point revisiting this Rocky Flats as a council, just have a conversation and see what we want to do.
Thank you for that. As well, I'll just add that I agree on the Rocky Prairie. We'll look at that in the new year at agenda setting and see where we are. Did you want to talk now?
Yeah, but you could finish.
Okay, great. And then also, that'll give us some time to talk to our friends up at the county, find out what's their take on that as well. But our friends at Tom Water definitely have taken a stand already, and I think we know enough about the pluses and minuses of what's best use for that property. I think Ms. Alexander left already, but I wanted to congratulate Nicole on being clean and sober. And it's a day at a time. I talked to her before this meeting, and I first met Nicole under the bridge, and to see her brightness in her eyes is really affirming, and it gives me hope as we go into this new year. And I do trust that she loves Olympia and that she wants all of us to love Olympia again. And I just want to also put on people's calendars that we are going to be receiving the report back from staff on our homeless response planning efforts that was undertaken by in-house staff and had amazing outreach in the community. I think we had at least 18, 19 meetings with different stakeholders and different groups that we put around tables, folks that normally don't talk to each other about this difficult issue. And what I'm hearing from staff is that they feel like they are going to come back to us with some very definitive, productive, positive ways that we could pull together and address this crisis. And I also just want to mention that the governor is deeply engaged in this conversation. It's not just about the climate, but he cares about the climate deeply, but he is very interested in dealing with not just the immediate crisis, but the long-term need for affordable housing across all types. So I'm hopeful going into 2020. And I think that's all I had. So Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Just two quick comments. I'll echo the sentiments that I'd love to see something similar to this resolution around the Rocky Prairie come to us early next year. As well, just encourage anybody that's watching or in the audience tonight to reach out to the Thurston County Commissioners or, and the Port of Tacoma and let them know that this is an ill-advised project in a pretty beautiful piece of natural land. And then I'd also like to just speak to a moment, for a moment, to the letter from the Thurston Conservation District. I've had a couple of opportunities to talk to Supervisor Johnson about this, and I do believe that it's really important for us to figure at a minimum how to mitigate the loss of that agricultural land in the Zahn property or, and/or retain some of it into the final design. I think there's quite a bit of opportunity to preserve farmland, whether directly in the city, through our ownership, or in partnership with one of the several conservation-type land trusts that are around. So the conversations that him and I've had have been about that project, and as he alluded to, when we start looking at our next comp plan amendments, I think there's probably other places, because of the timing with the Sustainable Thurston, where we need to bring to life Sustainable Thurston in comp plan language because it passed after the current comp plan rewrite that we have. So I just want to kind of plant that as a seed for everyone, that those things are really important to me.
Noted. All right. You good? Oh, Councilmember Rollins.
Thank you. I just wanted to also affirm support for looking at the Friends of Rocky Prairie resolution. Also wanted to affirm support for farmland preservation, and it's something I've said in a lot of conversations, that when we're thinking about what kids in the future are going to want, and I think about my nephew, they're not going to necessarily be wishing that they had more AstroTurf courts, they're going to be wanting that food. I think we have to make sure that when we're planning for parks or any use of public space, that we're planning for the real future that's ahead and not what the past has looked like. So I appreciate you coming out tonight. And I just want to acknowledge, yeah, we have a lot of work ahead of us on the issue of homelessness, the issue of drug use and addiction, and it's been a really tough year for pretty much everybody that I know. And I, I just, I hear the call for more, for more resources, and I think that's something that is widely agreed upon, and we just, we just need a shift in the way resources are thought of, especially higher up in the state, and we don't have a budget year for the legislature coming up, but that's really what's going to be needed. And I also just want to acknowledge that the situation that you talked about, Candy, your friend and neighbor over at Apple Hill, and I saw when she posted about it on Facebook, and I'm glad she wrote to us too. But, and I think it highlights what's so frustrating is that she and her son did everything right and called the police, and there was a police response, but that's never really going to be satisfying enough because that's inherently reactive to problems. And I think what the interest is, is getting underneath these problems, getting at what are the conditions causing it to begin with. And that's, that's a lot more complicated, but I think that's where we have to put our energy. So looking ahead to 2020, thanks for, again, for showing up.
Thank you. All right. I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar. We'll move. Second. Any questions, comments, or polls? End of the year, going, going. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar's been approved. That takes us to Other Business, which is our annual year-end highlights. So we'll be looking back at 2019, and Kelly Pers-Brossit has gone and scrubbed through all these slides and narrowed it down. It's like top 10 lists of every category that happens this time of year. We've got our own year-end highlights. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Selby, and council members. It's a pleasure to be up here again with you guys. For the record, my name is Kelly Pers-Brossit. I'm Strategic Communications Director. And it's time for the year-end highlights. As you know, this job has been the work of the marvelous Jay Bernie, but this year, he got kind of busy with other things. Who knew?
got kind of busy with other things, who knew? And he has passed the mantle on to me, and he's trusting me with his baby. So it's my honor to share with you just a fraction of the good work that the staff at the city do on behalf of the city. So for this final year in the decade, 2019, as you'll see, it's been a big and a busy year. So. So I'd like to thank Jesse Turner and my staff for her marvelous work on this, it's just stellar. And as you can see, a little shameless plug for my brilliant staff and for all they've done to support the staff in the efforts for the city, and like to wish you all a happy holiday.
Thank you, Kelly, so much. Any remarks to add? Mayor Protem Bateman.
It's always such a joy to watch the year end in review, and I have to say, I was just humble bragging tonight about how proud I am of our city, our staff, our council. We all do this work every single day, so we're quite accustomed to the actions that we've taken. It's been a long year, it's been a long couple of years. We really have a lot to be thankful for and proud of. So great work, everyone. And I also just have to say that, watching that video, the fingerprints of Steve Hall were just all over it. The leadership that we have, the incredible systems that we've created, the way we've been able to adapt to a changing environment and the changing needs of our community, he really did leave a legacy. I know he said that the departments and the infrastructure can't last forever, and the people might not be here forever, but the work culture that we have here is really something to be proud of as well. So thank you to everyone, I hope you have a wonderful holiday, whatever that it means to you. I hope it's meaningful and that you get some rest, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Anybody else want to go? I have to acknowledge as well that I did feel, yeah, just missing Steve today. Yeah, so I want to thank him, if he's watching out there. But like you said, he left us in such a great place, and so, yeah, it's something to really, really be proud of. And then I just wanted to remark that the police department now has a leaf, so the police department is using an electric car. How fast can that go? That should be in a commercial. So anyhow, any other wrap-up comments for this? Okay, so let's take us to another sad moment, and that is recognizing the service, the work, and really a legacy of our council member Nathaniel Jones, who is leaving us officially tonight, but unofficially, he's still going to be in town. I have a feeling we're going to still be pulling you into service as much as possible. So I just want to acknowledge that council service is a commitment unlike any other. We had a council member reunion to say goodbye to Steve Hall, and we had 30 years of council members in the same room, and it was something that you share that no one else can quite understand. It's kind of like having a permanent tattoo that says you paid to get in. And it's true that serving closest to the people is the hardest, but I think you'll acknowledge that it's also the most rewarding. And so I want to thank you for your service, and I wish you well in your next phase of what's next. Yeah, so thank you. Anyone else want to make some comments? And then Nathaniel will wrap up. Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
I first got to know Nathaniel when I was running, and we were supposed to meet for 45 minutes to talk about potentially having him endorse me. After two hours and a couple glasses of wine, I realized that he would be a good mentor and friend on the council, so thank you for all of that, and thank you for all your work.
All right, Councilmember Gilman.
Nathaniel, I have been so honored to follow you on the Land Use Committee, the Transportation Policy Board, inner-city transit, and our monthly meetings with Public Works Director Rich Hoy and Transportation Planning Staff. I've learned a lot, I've been proud of the work we've done together, and just very much appreciated your mentorship and your leadership on those issues, and was glad to follow you. Thanks.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Eight years is a long time, and it feels like longer than it should, frankly. I was just thinking this afternoon about how, you know, you and I came in within about three weeks of each other on council, and Councilmember Higgins we appointed in our first activities together. The three of us met for well over a year, and on our calendar it said newbies. And just getting together for lunch once a month to try and figure out what this giant organization was and where we could actually influence it, and it was a great way to get to know each other and figure out kind of where we were and that we were on the same page on a lot of things, and I've really just valued that. Council and collaboration to a level that I have only experienced a few times in my life, and I really appreciate that. I was thinking about the places where we have used you and your leadership very well, and there's going to be some gaps, and I think it's really important that we highlight a couple of these, and that, you know, around our environmental ethic and our interactions around clean energy, you have been that leader, to the point where we're happy following and knowing that someone's paying good attention to the details of what's going on at the legislative level and with our private companies that provide energy for us. To the same end, your commitment to parks and our ability to grow our park system into one of the best ones in the state, if not the nation, and bring the ethic of open space and the land not just being for recreation into that conversation is really significant, and I think something that is a legacy for the city council, and I'll always remember that. Also, as you mentioned, you know, you started in your comments earlier tonight around tribal relationships, and I've been energized by your ability to just jump into the middle of those conversations and bring really exciting things. You know, a lot of people don't know that we have a Billy Frank Trail in Olympia because of you. And, you know, a lot of people helped pull it together, but you started that conversation, and you made it happen in a lot of ways. A lot of people also don't know that in our early year, our first year together, we closed a significant corporate tax loophole, and started really foundationally stabilizing this city budget, you know, section by section by section, and a ton of that work will be a legacy that's left for generations and still not done yet. There's still some pretty significant, some broken pieces there that we need to rely on our legislature for, but I so appreciate having been able to do those things side by side with you, and I appreciate your ability to bring into the conversation humility and civility and not lead with your ego like so many people do in this world. And I'm just really happy to have served with you and looking forward to what you do next. Thank you for your service to Olympia and the people beyond.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I will affirm what you said earlier, which is that local government, we are closest to the people, and it is the most challenging. It takes the most grit, and it's also the most rewarding, and I believe that we all do it because we love our community so much. So thank you for loving Olympia for all these years, for putting yourself out there, for running for office, for being so committed, all the years of work on the various committees, land use, the land use policy that you've worked on, and all the representation on all the committees, TRPC. Thank you for helping to make Olympia a better place, we are going to miss you, and I think that you're going to be around, and I'm hoping that you'll still be engaged and we'll still get to see you, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what you're going to do, and I hope that some of it involves urban farming.
All right. Councilmember Rollins?
I'll just keep it short, which we never really did in our conversations. I think our longest was like three hours, and I always really appreciated them. We had the freedom in those conversations to really think about, you know, immediate solutions to problems in our community, but also just some of the most imaginative conversations I had actually were with you, are just able to think really big and think different. And I hope that we might continue that in the future, because, yeah, we all love this community, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Any remarks?
You know, just by chance, I do have some remarks. So thank you all, thanks for your comments, and thanks for this time we've spent together. We've had some shared adversity, but we've also had some amazing accomplishments. You're absolutely right, local government, closest to the people. It can be intense, but there's no question, it has been an honor to serve in this role on this council. So I want to say that I've been moved by the trust that this community has placed in me, and I hold deep appreciation for the many people who have helped me over these years. That help has come in many different forms. Friends, mentors, and critics have all helped me represent the values and the interests of this community. Olympia is a community that believes in the future, that trusts in the power of the human spirit to shape that future. Her people will surprise you with their determination, with their gumption, and with their guts. Olympians believe in collective will, and they will band together to achieve the outcomes they seek. There is great power in common purpose, and I am proud to be a part of this great city and its forward-looking, forward-thinking community. And so to the people of Olympia, thank you for your unique and audacious relationship with city government. Your informed suggestions, expectations, and demands are key to our success. To each of you, please be involved, and do it in a way that fits for you. We in this community need each other actively engaged if we expect to build the future we desire. And then to the 600 or so city staff who work day after day for the people of Olympia, I extend my warm thank you. You're hardworking, you're smart, and you're dedicated. Olympia is a great place to work because you made it that way. I am so impressed by the changes that you are making in the workplace and that you are making in the community at large. Your work touches thousands of people who depend upon you and the quality that you bring to your job. So thank you for your good work. And to my council veterans, or council colleagues, both veterans and to the newly arriving, I wish each of you the best as you work to meet Olympia's mounting challenges. Frankly, your success is our success. I ask that you make your decisions after thorough and thoughtful consideration, and that you act boldly to bring meaningful change. Many of Olympia's challenges cannot be adequately addressed through incremental half-steps. We, the community, are looking to you to lead the way, and this is the time for action. And so with that, I'm ready to pass the torch. I pass the torch to my successors. Godspeed, good luck, we're counting on you, and thank you all so very much.
Thank you for those comments. It's now time for council reports, and I am not going to have anything to report tonight because we talked quite a bit already, so I'll go to Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, I have nothing to report. Happy holidays and happy new year to everyone.
Oh, I should mention that the next two Tuesdays, council will not be meeting. Councilmember Rollins?
Thank you, nothing to report.
Mayor Protem Bateman?
Happy holidays and merry Christmas.
Councilmember Jones?
I believe I've given my final report. Thank you.
Give you one more run at it. Councilmember Gilman?
Nothing to report this evening.
And Councilmember Partially?
Just when you thought this was going to end early, I have three things to report. I attended the water treatment board lot, and we talked about a lot of things. Some of the meaty things that we spoke about was our almost 30-year plan, master plan that's beginning, and they're looking at not only our capacity but land use and all of the properties, some of the potential cool future things we can do, both for the environment as well as improving our processes. We then ended with a staff review for the director. It was a very fun meeting, and we will be coming back in January. The next thing that I attended was the downtown investment district working meeting. We discussed a couple things. After the last meeting, as all of you know, we did have the president, vice chair, and chair from the PBIA, the Parking and chair from the PBIA, the Parking and Business Assessment District. This time, we were talking about the makeup of the advisory board as well as options for the city participation, billing and debt collection procedures, the metrics that would be kept so that we can do an honest review, as well as get yearly reports, and a timeline and expectation of when we might see some action that would come to the council. And then my last report is the Joint Animal Services Committee meeting. We passed our budget, which some of you know was a bit of a tussle and late coming into our own budget process, and with our new director, kind of an eye-opening process in terms of where exactly our budget was that we have been actually surviving by coming off reserves. This year, we're only going to have to use $80,000 to be able to keep our processes going. We've all made a commitment last, I guess it was last night, to tackle this in the next year, including what are the things that we are actually going to need to make this a solvent organization, up to and including standardizing fees between the jurisdictions, including dog licensing, dog fines, release and surrender fees that are not necessarily equal across the jurisdictions, and finding a way so that we're not using and living off our reserve every year so that we're sustainable. Because as some of you may be aware, we're sheltered, but we also do all the animal control. And if we're not there, that's going to fall to our jurisdiction and all the other jurisdictions and to the police department, which is an added budget item. So it's on our best interest to actually get this figured out and make it a sustainable service for our county. And that's our plan for the next year, and we hope to be able to serve up information to the finance committee much, much earlier this year at all of the jurisdictions requests. You may hear an early information to the finance committee in March and February, what we're looking at, and a final report probably June, July of what we're going to be needing.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Partially? All right. City manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Partially for saving me from being the only one that would have a report tonight. I have two quick items. One is last week, we had discussion around the Boulevard Road RFQ, and there was an unanswered question about whether or not we needed to maintain a placeholder for a future fire station as part of that development. After talking with Chief John this week, we are staff-level recommending that we can remove that from the RFQ and let the RFQ proceed without a placeholder for a fire station in the Tennecker development. So I'm just looking for your consensus to keep it moving forward. And the second and last item for me is, on behalf of staff, we just want to thank you all for all of your work in 2019. As has been said, it's a very hard job at times. It's a rewarding job a lot of the time, but we so appreciate that you do it and that you're here. And so on behalf of staff, I have a gift for each of you that I'll give you, and no fair open them until everybody gets one.
Sounds like a dad. Definitely fancier than Steve Hall packaging.
Did he ever have packaging?
Not really. I think Renee helped you. All right, so we got to open all ones. This is so exciting. It's a bottle of wine. Oh, wait. Oh, no, a candle. Just kidding.
But it looks like a tree.
It is. It's like a birch. Birch pillar candle.
What does the fire chief say about lighting it here?
I know.
He prefers to do that when you get home.
Yeah. All right. Thank you so, so much. And for all of you at home, thanks for sticking with us this year. We'll see you next year. We're adjourned.